Ready to go, Daniel? You ready? Okay. Welcome to the City of Las Vegas City Council Work Session. Tonight, we have a very, very packed agenda, so hoping that our discussions will be limited, but very powerful tonight. We have, first of all, I'd like to welcome my new councilman, Mr. Joseph Baca Yeleninos. Thank you.
Hello, Senator.
Thank you. And roll call.
Mayor Louis A. Treheal.
Present.
Counselor David G. Romero.
Present.
Counselor Joseph P. Baca.
Here.
Counselor Michael Almatoya.
Present.
Counselor David Udi Varey Jr.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you allow a call?
Mr. Baca, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence or prayer?
President. To the right. United States. And to the people of this land. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We gather this afternoon by our heads, and first we remember the folks that are suffering in many manners, especially the families that are losing love on because of COVID-19. We pray for our community, and we pray that this governing body be led by wisdom in all our decisions that affect our community, our citizens, and our city employees. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baca. Approval of the agenda, Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make a change in the agenda and move item 10 after item 7.
Okay.
Make those changes and make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor? May I have a few minutes just to say a few words?
Okay, I'll allow you three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, for me, this is kind of deja vu. I was 36 when I was first elected to council, and now I'm 73. But I'm very glad to be here, Mayor. I consider it an honor to serve with you and with all the governing body here. I'm very convinced that we will do a very good job. I'm very happy and pleased with the personnel that you have appointed and the department heads. I know that they, along with the city employees, are going to help us to turn our community around and to really make our community shine and show that our community is a beautiful, beautiful community. Personally, I would like to also say that, well, we know that our community and the employees have been through some stressful times, most recently, but I know that you, Mayor, and the governing body, as I do, we respect and appreciate the city employees. We're elected to make the decisions, but it's really the employees that keep the town running from day to day. They're the ones out in the street, in the offices, doing their job. Without the city employees, we wouldn't have really a city. So I want to praise them, and I think it's good for the city employees to hear those words once in a while coming from us, to know that we do respect them and appreciate them and recognize them for the work that they do.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Baca.
And with that, there's a motion on the floor. Can you repeat that motion, Mr. Mayor?
The motion is to approve the agenda, moving items 10 after item 7.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, second.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Roll call, sorry.
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Udi Varey Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Romero, a second by Counselor Udi Varey Jr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, and that would be for April 8th and April 15th, 2020.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay. Second. Second. Mr. Baca first, and Mr. Montoya second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Udi Varey Jr.
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Baca, a second by Counselor Montoya. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion, please.
I'd like to thank you, Cassandra, for the good work that you do on those minutes.
Very well.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have public input, and, Mr. Mayor, I have received no public input over this meeting.
Very well. Thank you.
Moving on, our next item will be executive session.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to enter executive session pertaining to matters subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to render pending litigation in which the City of Las Vegas is or may become a participant as permitted by Section 10-15-187 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, NMSA 1978, and also for personnel matters as permitted by Section 10-15-1H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, NMSA 1978.
There's a motion on the floor. I'll accept a second.
Second.
Mr. Montoya, second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Udi Varey Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Romero, a second by Counselor Montoya. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion, please.
Thank you. We will not go into executive session. For our guests that are here, we are going to make this as brief as possible, just to be considerate of your time as well, and I appreciate that. Everybody being here, we will make this as brief as possible and return to the chambers just as soon as we can. Thank you.
I want to reconvene from executive session and note for the record that only those matters discussed in executive session, okay, I'll go back, as discussed with personnel matters as permitted by Section 10-15-1H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act and matters subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to render pending litigation were discussed, and all the matters were discussed.
There's a motion on the floor. I'll accept a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Montoya. Roll call, please.
Counselor Udi Varey Jr.
Yes.
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Romero, a second by Counselor Montoya. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion, please.
Thank you. We will not convene into a regular session, and I apologize to our guests that were here timely. We'll work on a better agenda formation so that we don't have a delay for our guests. It's like inviting you over for dinner and not answering the door for three or four hours later. We apologize for that.
Mr. Mayor, do we need our motion to go back into regular session?
I thought we did.
That was to come back from executive.
Executive session, yeah. And so a motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Motion to enter a regular session.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Mr. Montoya. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Udi Varey Jr.
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Romero, a second by Counselor Montoya. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Preskis. So the following presentations pertain to the city council and the future-making decisions regarding big events this summer pertaining to fiestas and to the bike rally and to all those other things. We've invited some experts tonight to share their views on how the city should proceed, if we should proceed with those big gatherings. Today's governor's briefing said that large gatherings will not be allowed as of yet, and so planning these events make it very hard. We will be making a decision soon whether we want to proceed with the fiestas and the bike rally, probably with the next city council meeting. Those will be action items. But I wanted to invite two experts with us today, Mr. Leo Mayestas and Dr. Jesús Tafoya, who's a physician in our community. Can I, gentlemen, thank you for being here. We appreciate it, and the public appreciates you being here as well.
Good afternoon, Councilor. Mayor Treheal. Could I just give you some quick graphics as to how the nation is dealing with other situations that are having to do with mass gatherings? So if I can pull your attention to the screen here, and I don't know if anybody else is aware of this.
Hold on a second. Wrong screen.
So if everybody's well aware of this situation that happened in the county in Washington State, one individual was tested positive for COVID-19, then went to a choir practice where there were 61 individuals in practice. It was a two-and-a-half-hour practice. The state now has a total of 5,364 cases for the state. We ended up having 32 cases out of that one individual because of a mass gathering. Today, we had 155 new cases. Three were hospitalized, and two actually passed away from this situation. 200 people are hospitalized. We have 12 new deaths, and a total of 115,011 tests have been administered since the beginning So this would reflect what we're not wanting to happen from a mass gathering like our of testing here in New Mexico. fiestas or bike rally.
Mr. Mayor?
Just to give you one other graphic, and I will keep this as short as possible, this
Yes.
A quick question, Mr. Montoya. And in Son Miguel, excuse me, in Las Vegas, we have seven?
kind of gives you what social distancing is doing for us. So the Department of Health's website is reflecting seven cases. One individual in five days can infect ultimately 2.5 people, and at a 30-day rate, you can We actually have eight cases.
Eight. Okay. Thank you.
There's a little bit of a leeway time on how long it's taking for the Department ultimately infect 406 individuals. of Health to update the information.
Oh.
So as you can see, it kind of embellishes out very quickly. There's a lot of chains of command that needs to go through before it's updated, and I It shows how contagious this virus is, and they're dealing it with other parts of the wonder which is.
Thank you.
And Dr. Tafoya, you can introduce yourself too when you're ready.
county, other parts of the country, I should say.
Okay. And these graphs that I have, I mean, it's just to give you visuals, but I mean, the
So we don't want to bring that home to Las Vegas or Son Miguel County, so.
And I was remiss in introducing you.
information itself is just, so when you look back at COVID-19 pandemic and the way it
Can you introduce yourself, Mr. Mayestas?
Yes, my name is Leo Mayestas. I'm the emergency manager for Son Miguel County and the City of Las Vegas.
started affecting our country, we just saw the rates of disease and the deaths skyrocketing.
Thank you.
So I would like to have Mr. Tafoya kind of give you some of the medical portion of
And then when you kind of look back to the point, it's not going to show, I don't think,
what we're looking at for mass gatherings.
Sure.
I don't know what's going on. But when you go to the point where around, you know, March, towards the end of March is when we really started putting more of these social distancing measures in place, you see that number kind of topple, top off, and then start to drop. And so these images are off the CDC website and the healthdata.org website, and what they're showing is projections into June and July, and the projections show the cases of the virus just plummeting. Now, you know, that sounds great. Same thing with the deaths, plummeting. And but if you notice, one of these things, there's a bar that goes up, and that's us increasing our testing. And so as we increase our testing and start, you know, quarantining people who are positive and testing them and separating from everyone else, we're going to see the cases start to drop. And so but the big reason why we're seeing those numbers drop off isn't necessarily because of the testing, it's because of the measures that are in place right now with the social distancing, requiring masks, and trying, you know, highly encouraging people to stay home. And so if we keep those measures in place, the projections will happen the way they're predicted, which is for the cases to go very low. If we stop the social distancing and continue or go back to social gatherings, the cases are going, it's not going to follow this beautiful graph in front of me. It's going to go right back in the other direction. And so if you look at a lot of the reopening efforts around the country and specifically in our state, they're very guarded. We're opening things little by little, not all at once, and they're still encouraging people to stay home. And so mass gatherings are still not allowed. I don't predict that they're going to be allowed even in July. Basically, they've talked about concerts and other large gatherings that are pretty much, the thought is they're done for 2020, and a lot of concerts have already rescheduled for 2021. And so that should kind of paint a picture of what the summer is going to look like for us. And, you know, it's like with the numbers that he just showed, all it takes is one person from out of state, out of the city, to come and introduce an infection or a community. One of the other big things about the COVID-19 is it's mutating at a very rapid rate. By the time it went from China to Washington State, it had already undergone three mutations. And then the virus that hit the other side of the United States came from Europe, and that was introduced to New York. That one was shown to be a lot more infective than the other one, a lot more aggressive. And so, and why? Because it had mutated quite a bit. And so one of the thoughts that's brought up here is, well, what if people have already been exposed to this and now have some antibodies? First of all, we don't know if that's going to prevent you from getting reinfected, but the other thing is, is if the virus is mutating so quickly, it's not going to probably offer much protection. So even if the virus had swept through our whole community by then, and we bring people from other cities, other states, they're going to bring other strains of that virus back home to our community, and that's the biggest reason I can think of to not have the events. If we had very low numbers in Las Vegas and we closed off the event to only people in Las Vegas, then we'd probably be safer that way. But to have people come from out of the city, there's no way we could actually do that, first of all. And second of all, to have them come from all over the place, we're going to see a huge spike in infection at a time that we shouldn't be seeing that, and that's right in the middle of the summer. And so one of the big focuses that I have is not just about health, you know, and medical stuff, but just passion for our community. And the fact is, right now, we have a lot of families that are out of business, out of jobs, and they're, you know, on the verge of probably losing their homes and everything else that they've worked so hard to do. And so the last thing we want to do is delay by another month or two when they could open because we wanted to have the event and introduce another round of infection. And so I think it's important that our focus be on opening our businesses, not vendors from out of town, but our businesses and get them back up and working, and more importantly than that is keeping them healthy. And so I think that would be a good reason to postpone the event. And guess what? If we do a great job with everything, then next year, we have our fiestas and have a great time. But let's ensure that we can have more of us there rather than having more deaths.
Dr. Tafoya, could you introduce yourself again? I'm sorry.
So I'm Dr. Tafoya. I'm a family medicine practitioner here in Las Vegas, born and raised here, and I've been back for three years now, so proud to serve the community and be of service to kind of help guide you guys through this process too in addition to the work I do.
Well, we appreciate it, and I'd just like to say thank you because I think we beat the governor to the punch with a face covering update, and part of it was talking with Dr. Tafoya and getting his advice. Once we saw a few cases in the community, it was very easy for us to make a decision that that should happen. And now on Saturday, everybody in New Mexico is going to be required to wear masks in public. So we got Las Vegas used to it a little bit earlier, and I thank you for your advice and your time on the phone with me, and I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. Any questions for these gentlemen? Mr. Mayor?
I just want to, you know, thank you guys for, you know, for all your work and awareness that you're spreading throughout our community. And thank you, Mayor, for listening to these fine gentlemen, and I know they're advisory, you know, and we don't have an official COVID advisory board, but, you know, you're listening to them, and you've taken steps in order to protect our community. And I think, you know, there's still a little more aggressiveness that we have to use. I know there's some big-box stores, a big-box store that we have that managers aren't enforcing this, and I know you've made, you know, a couple of efforts as to send staff to go try to address these issues, and that we'll do what we have to do. I mean, if the small mom and pop shops have to follow these ordinances, you know, these mandates by you and now the governor, I think that they should too, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Baca?
I too want to thank you and the members of the council for the stand that you took. Ironic, you're elected mayor, and all of a sudden, you've got to make a tough decision. And but you did it, and councilors, thank you. And I also want to thank our city manager and our chief of police because I get a lot of calls at the station, and I guess the reason is people know where to find me. But I did have some calls from people very concerned about some of the big stores in town. I called the city manager, and he said he was going to send the chief of police to those stores, and he did. Two days later, I went, in fact, Mayor, you and I ran into each other at one of the stores, and boy, I was surprised that the staff and a lot of the customers were walking in with masks. I got a call from a poor young lady, almost in tears. She works for one of the stores in town. She says she's wearing a mask, she has two little kids, and she says, "I'm concerned because our customers are coming in without a mask." She says, "Our manager is yelling at us because we're telling customers they can't come into the store without a mask." She didn't know what to do, and I told her, "I really don't have an answer for you." I says, "I'll share with the mayor and council. Maybe they can go and talk to that manager, or maybe send your executive order to that store as well." But no, I think, and thank you, Dr. Tafoya, for the report you did, and Mr. Montoya. Roswell just canceled their UFO convention. They're not going to have it.
Oh, darn.
Santa Fe Opera has canceled their events. They're not going to have them. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Mayestas again for all the work that you're doing, and I know your phone goes off 24/7 and people calling you from everywhere, and you've made yourself known as a public servant at this very time, and I thank you, Mr. Mayestas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, and Mr. Montoya?
So to my understanding, if anybody feels they have the symptoms, right now, they can make an appointment at the hospital at Alta Vista?
They have to call, if they have symptoms, they have to call the second number on the DOH line. Then they will be advised as to where to go and what to do. There's public testing going on at El Centro and at Public Health by appointment only at Public Health. El Centro has designated hours to get tested, and that's for anybody who's, you know, hopefully symptom-free. But then the hospital also offers testing.
And just so you're aware, public knows these are free tests.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, insurances are never supposed to be charged for this test.
Mr. Mayor, is there any drive-up testing?
We're going to have another?
That's at Alta Vista right now, and that's what I'd recommend if you are having symptoms. I really do prefer the drive-up testing, but the good news is that El Centro Clinic and other places, or the state, county, sorry, the county, they're wearing all the proper gear too, but I really like the drive-up idea. So that's the other thing to do is ask your primary care provider for an order, and I'd recommend calling them, not going into the office, calling them and letting them know your symptoms so that we can actually, what we're doing in our clinic, we will walk an order out to your car in the parking lot so that you don't bring infection into the clinic. And then they can go through the drive-through, and while they're waiting for their test results, they should be quarantined at home until they have that negative result. But yeah, your primary care doctor should be able to order the test for you and have it done at Alta Vista or at the San Gil County.
Mayor, if I may, just to give a little bit of an update on the testing. So we have three places in the county, which would be the county public health office. The phone number is 4505-425-9368. They usually do testing only on Mondays and Wednesdays, but they are going to be doing testing tomorrow. They've also opened the criteria to testing to anybody that works in any type of workforce. You're welcome to get tested at this point. If you're not working and you're at home and you feel that you have the symptoms and you meet the criteria, you also will get a test. The hospital has also now changed their criteria so that you don't need a doctor's order. They're following the same criteria that the public health office is doing as far as testing.
That's new information for me. That's great.
And El Centro?
And El Centro is doing a lot of testing at percentages of high-risk environments like our group homes, our detention center, pulling a percentage of them so they can get contact testing.
And they've helped us with our nursing homes as well. We're trying to test 15% of the employees and the population, and every week, we're testing more. And we're trying to do another 15% every week, and so El Centro's been really key in helping us accomplish that.
Good. That's a good thing. Anybody else? Gentlemen, once again, thank you so much, and I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you. Our next present presenter is Fire Chief Billy Montoya, providing an update on the fire department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dr. Taylor, distinguished guests. First off, I'd like to start off, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Billy Montoya, City of Las Vegas Fire Chief. Been with the department for over 20 years now. Had the opportunity to serve in every rank at that department, and with, in conversation with the manager, he's asked me to come give a presentation, first to welcome everybody that's new and kind of give an update on what has been going on with the fire department, where we're at, what we consist of, and where we're going. So with that being said, come before you tonight, provide a little information. You will find, put together a small informational packet. It's the red folder that was left in front of you guys there. I'm not going to go through every piece of the packet because I promise that I will keep this short in the essence of time and will be brief and precise. So the informational packet gives details on an improvement plan that we have for the fire department for the calendar year 2020. The department currently has a total of 21 employees. Admin staff consists of four positions that are on an 8-to-5 work schedule. That's made up of our deputy fire chief, who is also our inspector, training captain, my administrative assistant, and myself. The remaining employees work a 48/96 work schedule and are split into three rotating shifts. Each shift consists of a shift lieutenant, engineer, and four firefighters. All staff responds to a variety of life-threatening rescue emergencies ranging from EMS calls to vehicle entrapment and, of course, any type of fire emergency. Over the past years, though, we've been fortunate enough to hire a deputy chief, who, like I said earlier, is a fire inspector and is responsible for the Fire Prevention and Inspection Bureau of our department. This division is responsible for all business inspections, fire code enforcement, and all fire prevention education afforded to the community. We have established a very good working relationship with the New Mexico State Fire Marshal's Office. So we work in conjunctive efforts to supply the community with the best fire prevention that we can as far as code enforcement. Work together, have very good relationship with them. Very, very soon, our deputy chief will be bringing an updated ordinance that will go in line with what the state is requiring, so that way he's bringing up our city ordinance as far as fire code to be in line with the state. So that's something that'll probably be coming up within the next month or so. Another very positive piece of information is that we have acquired two brand-new fire trucks for the Las Vegas community. We already received one of them, and I know there was a question on this, I think by Counselor Montoya last session. So we're going to be getting two fire trucks. So we've already acquired one of them. The next one should be coming in roughly August timeframe. They're both Ferrari Custom Pumpers, come with a 1,000-gallon water tank and a 1500-gallon per minute pump. We were able to purchase the first unit utilizing $100,000 from grant funding, $97,000 from state fire protection fund, and financing $219,000. This unit will be replacing aging fire apparatus. The second unit was funded 100% legislative appropriations in the amount of $675,000. You'll see details on that in the improvement plan, goes into specifics, and if you would like more or maybe to see the piece of equipment, feel free to stop by the firehouse, and we'll definitely give you a tour of it. Now, we're very fortunate to acquire these funding sources to replace the aging first-out response units without impacting the general fund at all, so that was a plus for everybody. These units will ensure the safety of our staff and will also provide the community with the best emergency response possible. This will also allow us to stay in compliance with all MFP standards regarding adequate fire equipment. We also recently acquired another grant in the amount of $100,000 to replace any and all. We already received one of them, and I know there was a question on this, I think by Councilman Montoya last session. So, we're going to be getting two fire trucks. So, we've already acquired one of them. The next one should be coming in roughly August timeframe. They're both Ferrari Custom Pumpers, come with a 1,000-gallon water tank and a 1,500-gallon per minute pump. We were able to purchase the first unit utilizing $100,000 from grant funding, $97,000 from state fire protection fund, and financing $219,000. This unit will be replacing aging fire apparatus. The second unit was funded 100% legislative appropriations in the amount of $675,000. You'll see details on that in the improvement plan, goes into specifics, and if you would like more or maybe to see the piece of equipment, feel free to stop by the firehouse, and we'll definitely give you a tour of it. Now, we're very fortunate to acquire these funding sources to replace the aging first-out response units without impacting the general fund at all, so that was a plus for everybody. These units will ensure the safety of our staff and will also provide the community with the best emergency response possible. This will also allow us to stay in compliance with all MFP standards regarding adequate fire equipment. We also recently acquired another grant in the amount of $100,000 to replace any and all outdated or inoperable communication equipment. We're very happy to report that all items have been ordered, and we make the deadline of incumbents of funds specified in the grant. So, we stayed in compliance with that, and we should be receiving the equipment within the next month or so. Again, if you go to the improvement planning, gives a detailed version of it. One of the last subjects that I'd like to update everyone on is the Eva Merrill Fire and Hose Museum. This building is the one located downtown 155 Bridge Street and serves as administrative offices on the top floor and fire museum on the bottom floor. This project has consisted of four phases of construction and only has one more phase to go. All construction is complete, however, the design of the display cases and artifact exhibition will occur as the final phase sometime probably within this fall. We were set to open, hopefully, mid-June. Due to COVID, all restrictions are in place, so we can't allow anybody to go do measuring for the display cases and so forth. But we're very, very close. We're seeing light at the end of the tunnel. We have been in contact, working closely with Cabrini Martinez from the Rough Rider Museum. She's going to be in charge of this last portion of it. It takes a real expert like Cabrini and Shane Flores to do all the research, script analysis, and put together exactly how this museum's going to flow. Hopefully, we can get that done very soon. I know she's already started with an intern from Highlands University, and they're beginning work as far as the display cases, where they're going to be set up, how the actual artifacts are going to be preserved, and the labeling and design of everything else.
Good.
So, hopefully, depending on COVID stuff, but data completion, I'm looking sometime towards the fall. This concludes the presentation I have for you tonight. And I'd like to thank all of you for your hard work and dedication to our community, and with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Montoya.
And councilors, just a suggestion. Well, first of all, today in the news, the folks with the National Forest have implemented strict fire restrictions in all the forests and in the national parks, no smoking, well, smoking in your vehicle designated areas. But I'd like to, chief, offer to you that if you'd like to have yourself or any of your staff record commercials, we'll air them on KFU and a KLVF to remind folks, right now, folks, the experts are saying that the whole southwest of New Mexico, we're still in drought conditions. They're looking at the Hila, the level, water level of the Hila, the Canadian, and the Rio Grande, they're not very happy with that. So, I offer you that offer to go and record commercials if you want to.
Fantastic.
Just write them and let me know when you're going to go.
Definitely. Put something together and I'll get it.
Just to remind the people.
Yeah, that'll be part of our fire prevention.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you, mayor and councilors.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much, and thanks for doing a good job with your department.
Thank you. I appreciate it, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next presenter is Maria Gilvari, utilities director, and she's going to talk about our water supply.
Good evening, mayor, council, and members of the community. Distinguished guests, I was asked today to give a report on our water availability. I would like to start with, the state of our water supply is good. The city's primary source of water is the Guyanish River. Currently, 100% of the water that we use for providing, for treating and providing to the community does come off the river. This morning, we let 22 cubic feet per second flowing down the river. To be able to compare that, 3 cubic feet per second is about what the city needs to maintain production for the community. Currently, we're diverting just a little bit more than that because we want to top off our reservoirs right before we really get into the rotation schedule. I'd like to talk a little bit about supply, additional supply, so other than rain, snowfall would be a big contributing factor to our water supply right now, but the base snow up in Wesner Springs is at zero. So, currently, the water that we would be getting off the river is going to be from rainfall as well as anything that is coming through the embankments and going into the river. But again, we do have 22 CFS coming down the river currently.
CFS?
CFS, cubic feet per second.
Okay.
The rotation schedule, as was requested, asked about a little earlier, beginning on April 1st, the state engineer watermaster begins administering the river, making sure that the city as well as any other users of the river share the river. That starts by seniority. Once the flows get below about 20 CFS, then cubic feet per second, then we start sharing the river. We share the river on a three-day-on, three-day-off rotation for the city. The Aseca's are on the river seven days on, seven days off. So, during this time, the city balances diverting water off the river as well as diverting from storage. This is a balancing act because we do need to take into consideration supply coming down the river, the schedule itself, current demand. But some other things we need to take into consideration are things like potential for wildfire. We do have a potential every year, so taking too much out of our reservoirs is not something that we want to do. If there ever, when, unfortunately, when there is a wildfire, our reservoirs will be critical for this community because we will need to live off the reservoirs for a period of time. So, our priority would be during this time of year to take as much off the river as we can while sharing the river. Currently, Peterson, which is our primary reservoir, has 88% of its capacity. Story, we have 99% capacity there, and those would be about 60 million gallons in Peterson and 260 in Story. Bradner is at 58% capacity. That has about 60 million gallons in it. Bradner is currently still not usable. We are still in the refill process with the state engineer. We just received approval to start adding some more water to it. Unfortunately, it's not the best time of year to be adding water to Bradner because our priority will be keeping water in Peterson and in Story. Any additional water that we could take off the river will, at that point, go to Bradner. One thing I would like to make sure I clarify is sometimes the percentage referenced for storage is what people use to make decisions, and that's not always the best tool for decision-making because sometimes it can be confusing, such as if I was to say there's 100 days of storage in the river. People hear that, and they think they only have 100 days of water. That's not correct. We have whatever is coming down the river plus the 100 days of storage. So, I don't like to use that as a measuring stick. You will, if you ask me, I will tell you at the same point. That's not something that I would use for determining factor unless we get to the point where there is little to no water coming down the river. That's when that date, that timeframe would become important. So, again, if I am asked for that number, I will give it to you, but I will give it to you with an asterisk explaining why that's not the end-all, the all-end-all. A few years ago, I do recall somebody passing out a timeframe, and there was a fear in the community that that number of days was all we had, and it set some of the community members into a panic in buying bottled water when that was not necessary. So, right now, we do have ample supply coming off the river to share water with our neighbors, our Aseca members, our community members, as well as meet customers' needs.
Great.
And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Oh, Mr. Montoya. So, are those high numbers that you have there, we're not looking at any restrictions on water for the summer?
That is correct, and, counselor, I have not, in my time as director, I have not gone above stage zero. We've been very prudent, the community has been very prudent with the water consumption, and staff have been very good at stopping water leaks as promptly as possible, that we have not had to go above stage zero in at least five years.
Thank you.
And all the stage zeros, by the way, is odds evens for watering your yards.
Is there a possibility that we could possibly get some public information going regarding water conservation and odd-even watering scheduling?
Some more on the current state?
Yeah, like a radio ad or that type of thing because I see a lot of people watering outside their watering schedule, and especially this time of year.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You mentioned, well, we don't want to scare the community, but I do remember several years ago, remember, we were down to 26 to 30 days of water supply? What plan do we have long-term? I know that we have some brackish water. We're dependent on Mother Nature, and I commend mayor and council, the staff in getting Bradner back in line. That's so important, but Bradner will only have water if it rains, and you just said we have zero.
We have no snow.
No snow. And I think we got like 36 inches this winter. Normally, it's like five feet, I believe. Should we be talking now, long-term, if a heavy drought hits? Should we be talking about what we need to do to a treatment plan, build a plan for treating brackish water? Have you looked at those things?
Counselor, we have discussed that, but the acquisition that the city made a few years ago with Story was a tremendous assistance to us, to where it's always a good idea to still keep in our mind what would our well, how would we use our well field? And right now, our well field would be used for emergency purposes. We want to continue to allow it to recover from when we did use it. So, we would want to keep those discussions going for possible new wells. The process for treating brackish water is extremely expensive, and with the fact that only one of our wells currently is brackish, that would be, in our assessment, my assessment, a waste of city funds, when we could blend it if necessary. But with the amount of storage that we have, as long as we're prudent with storage and keeping our reservoirs topped off and being smart about how we fill our reservoirs and how we use the water that we are given, when we did have the drought a few years ago, we would not have been in that position of somebody saying we only have 28 days of water. But again, that 28 days was based on storage, so it wasn't a 100% accurate representation because we were taking a lot of water off the river at the time.
Thank you.
Or taking some water off the river at the time. I think there was another question at one point, I did want to make sure, the rotation schedule, when we get down to the lowest part, allows the city to always take 1.5 CFS cubic feet per second. Again, that is only half of what we would need to maintain, so when we, if and when we get down to that point, that's when we're taking out of storage and off the river and blending.
Thank you, Maria.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The next item is discussion item, agenda.
Okay.
And the first item is discussion with Mexico DOT Chairman Walter Adams and District Four Engineer James Daigus, providing an update on current and future projects. I'm going to make that phone call now.
How do I could? I'd like to keep these discussions as brief as possible. Thank you.
Think anybody remind folks you're going to be at the Plaza Park this Saturday, right?
Yes, I have, I'm a Saturday in the park every Saturday from 10 to noon, so anybody have concerns, come on by and see me. You'll find me at the Plaza Park somewhere. I'll be in the gazebo or on the grass or whatever. We've had a few meetings here already, and I want to keep that up. Thank you, Joseph.
It's pretty nice that you're doing that.
Thank you.
It's different, and it's thinking out of the box.
Yes.
Signal here too. What's the number that you have there? Just to make sure. That's the number we're calling?
That's the number.
It's not going through. Yeah. They call us or no?
No.
They can't call us?
No. They would have to. Well?
Let me check.
Maybe. Let me see. Let me try this one more time.
Can you do speakerphone on your cellphone?
Yes. Maybe the speakerphone.
Can you switch this into there or?
No, it won't feed through the mic.
But we could hear him. You could put him on speaker.
It's not coming through either. It's not going through here either.
He can't call him. Is he trying to phone it or? It won't work, he's straight across the screen.
You could just speakerphone and put it by your speaker.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second, Commissioner.
You can put him on your speakerphone and put him close to your speaker, it'll pick it up. Tell him to speak loud.
Let's see, hold on.
Good.
Commissioner, we're going to try this speaker on my phone.
And I'll give it back, but we'll put him on speaker. And the mic is on the phone.
My speaker's not very well, so.
See, ask if you could speak.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Hello, mayor, and hello, city council, and want to thank you for including us in your meeting. And we have, I know you want us to be real brief, so we're going to give a quick update. I'm going to have James Daigus, who's our district engineer. I just want to talk real quickly about, we've been going all over the state, and our motto is partnering. We want to make sure that we're partnering with all the communities, all the entities. I think we all have the same thing in common, and I'm excited, although we're going through some very trying times now. I think we, it's an exciting time too that we can accomplish projects, and the only way we're going to accomplish things is if we work together, we use our resources. And I want to commend both our employees and the employees at the city and the county because I see them out each and every day. I see them picking up trash, and I see them working on the roads, and without them, we couldn't achieve the success that we're able to get. I've seen the city working on their projects, working on projects, we've already worked on projects together, and so we'll stand for some questions, and I'm going to turn it over to James. But mayor and council, before you guys can think about this, I think I can get the money to bring in another sign at the other end of town by the hospital, the welcome to Las Vegas, and on the agreement that we have on the one that we put up on this side, we built it and the city would maintain it, so I would ask that, I think we can build another one if you're able, if you would be willing to maintain it, but we'll talk about that later. I just wanted to throw that on the table, but with that, I'll turn it over to our district engineer, James Daigus, and for any questions after.
Thank you, doctor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is James Daigus, I'm the District Four Engineer here in Las Vegas, basically in charge of the northeast quadrant of the state of New Mexico. I'd like to thank you for having me here today. But I did, I gave Councilman Montoya some handouts. Has everyone got a handout there? Did you get one that gets that out to everybody?
Yes, we do.
Good. So, real quickly, I'm not going to go through all of these projects here, but I thought it'd be a good idea to let you all know what's going on in the city of Las Vegas and then some major projects that are in the outskirts of Las Vegas. I think it's very important to let you all know what's going on on I-25 and New Mexico 140 and some of these other projects, so it kind of ties into what you got going on in here in the city of Las Vegas. I think it's very important that our transportation system connects with each other, an interstate, and also within the city of Las Vegas. So, that's what you see there, and I can go over them real quickly. And if you turn the page over to the back, there's a kind of a map behind that, and that kind of gives you a view of these projects that are on that list and where they're at and where Las, you can see Las Vegas in the middle, and the red right there in the middle, Las Vegas.
You can see Las Vegas in the middle and the red right there in the middle of Las Vegas. Of course, that's Grand Avenue, the projects that we've been, we're getting ready to complete now. And then also the microservicing project that we did up to Mills. And then you can see also New Mexico and then on to Monizuma. So you see kind of an aerial view of what's happening with Mexico DOT is doing in the next four or five years to make some improvements to our transportation system around Las Vegas area.
Mr. Daigos?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to commend you on those roads look beautiful. You guys have done a fantastic job. Those roads look very, very nice.
Thank you. Thank you. I think, you know, it was kind of an idea Chairman Walter Adams over here and also Adam Romero, our ED in maintenance and some of my staff. When we saw this last year when we were doing the Grand Avenue project here for the south side, the interstate here on the south side over towards the middle of town there, we thought we could try to tie it in with a microservicing to kind of blend everything in. So I think it's going to function real nice for the community. And right now, we're, next week, we should be getting New Mexico striped and the other projects striped. And then right now, our crews here in Las Vegas are going to be working on all the crosswalks and the pavement markings they're out there today on Grand Avenue. So they should all come together in the next two or three weeks.
Great. They look beautiful.
Oh, thank you. So kind of a, I mean, I don't know if you want me to go through each project. I know the mayor wanted us to be quick. I could do that if you want. If you just have questions, I mean, do you want to look at the?
If it would be all right with the mayor and council, we would just, at this point, you've seen what we're doing around town. I think that's more what you're interested in. And if you have any questions, we would just stand for the questions.
I have a question, Commissioner. So down at the bottom of the page of that spreadsheet, you have project types and it says map city of Las Vegas. And then it says call for project city of Las Vegas at the very, very, very bottom.
Right.
What does that, what does that mean? Has the money been allocated for those projects?
Yes. We allocated, last year briefly, we were given, the districts and their six districts were given $50 million from the governor and the legislators. And then they didn't get, they did not get split equally. We actually got the most here at our district. We ended up with almost $10 million. And with that, we did the full funding for the project. That's right down there. It's 1.6 million dollars. And we funded that. And I think, and that was a question I had for the mayor and the council tonight is where you're at with that project because it was fully funded by us.
Do you know, Mr. Taylor?
I don't know.
Danny, do you know?
Right now, we're in preliminary planning design. We're going to go with that. What is the community agrees and some of the changes that they agree? Go ahead and go ahead and design.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Adams?
Yes. I just wanted to let you know that you, last year, two projects were submitted for consideration. We split the money through the whole district, which was some in Santa Rosa, some in Guadalupe County, some in Angel Fire and some other places. We did a project here with the county and there was two projects. It was Legion and it was this one. And we could only fund one with the money we had. And so we funded this one. There was some more money given to the legislature this year that was supposed to go to entities, but that money got pulled with the budget now. So as of right now, I think all the projects are on hold. And we're waiting now till the special session in May. We've been in conversations with the governor's office as far as how, what impact it's going to have on our road fund.
Is there a possibility, is there a possibility of that money being pulled already for that designated project?
No, the one that, on that city project that we're talking on, that's already been allocated.
Okay.
Yeah, so that money is yours to do that project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Councilman Montoya, I just wanted to thank you and Mr. Daigos for being patient with us and waiting for us. I know I told you probably about six o'clock would give you a call. Now you're behind, but I want to thank you personally for everything that you guys have done for us, for the city. And I wanted to put faces to names in this way we could know, like our city manager and our attorney and our directors know who they're talking to at the other end of the phone. But due to this virus deal and your policies, we had to meet this way. But I want to thank you for the joint projects that you guys did over on Legion and other areas in town this last weekend. I thank you for assisting us with the oil, the distributors, the trucks, the employees and stuff like that. That is a really, really putting your foot forward and helping us out, the community of Las Vegas. And we're proud that you're in that position and that you're helping your district down here in District Four. You didn't forget where you came from and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Montoya. I just want to tell you one thing is that I'm proud to be associated with the city of Las Vegas, the county of San Miguel, and now with the whole state of New Mexico. But I want to tell you that with the council and the mayor we have now, with the leadership we have here at the DOT, with the governor and with our legislators, we can partner together to do what we all do best, and that's to do what's in the best interest of our citizens, for our travelers. And I think if we partner, we're going to make this the wonderful place that it's always been. So I look forward to working with all of you, with the counties, with the schools, whoever it is, because that way we're going to make a difference. And you can already see it. There's comments going all over town. You guys that were doing your, I've seen the crews I'm already walking, picking up and our crews are picking up and work together, we're going to make a difference. And I think we already are. So thank you for having us and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. We appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Daigos.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor and councilors, whenever this thing is, we get through this, I guess you call it this pandemic here, we'll be happy to go down there and meet with you and give you a much better presentation so we can meet you all.
We'll invite you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Pastor?
Since we have these two gentlemen on conference call, but we can wait on this till some other meeting. But I had this photo on the screen and this is another project that I've been working with Walter Adams and Mr. Daigos. But I think it's very important for the community and the business community. It involves also installing a camera on KFUN Hill so that the TV stations can pick it up, so they can air it on their TV channels of the traffic on I-25. But we can talk about that later, you know, so we can move things along for this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
All righty.
Ms. Freskies?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next item is discussion recommendation of tourism recovery and tourism related city events. Our community development director, Mr. Henderson.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Dr. Taylor. I'm going to be repeating probably some stuff that Dr. DeFroya and Leo Miestas spoke about, but I'll just let you know, you know, our thought process behind a lot of these things. You know, fiestas, we pretty much have put that into a delay mode because we were hoping that somewhere down the line, come October timeframe, there was a possibility that we could resurrect some of that. It may not be, it seemed pretty pessimistic, but we, I'll talk a little bit more about that in our future planning. The motorcycle rally for the same reasons of restrictions of 100 people or less, which is in effect now and through July, is of course impossible to attain as well. But there's other complications as far as that's concerned. And that has to do with, and I believe it's the tank, the gang task force agreements that our local police, since we don't have the resources during one of those rallies for our own departments, that we rely on others to come into town and help us out. And that's not going to be available through the state. So that itself would have canceled motorcycle rally this year, other than the other restrictions. And that'll probably be the problem in the future too, if we want to try to resurrect that as well. We met with the fire department and the police department to discuss Fourth of July. And of course, that on the overview looks a little bit different than other events. The problem is that we had a lot of people parking in parking lots all over town and it'd be impossible to control that. And so the decision, our recommendation along with the police and the fire department was that this too would have to be either delayed or canceled. And in our mind, of course, we would like to delay and we'll put the hope out there that things were lightened up a little bit at some point that we could possibly, you know, have the fireworks. So part of that is what we're calling the Las Vegas Recovery Celebration. And this is our thought process that it's, and we're going to be planning on this and talking to vendors and everybody else. You know, as time moves on, if we see that there's some possibility, some light at the end of the tunnel, we can start looking at things like fireworks and bringing vendors in for some kind of an event. Hopefully, we can celebrate. You know, again, it sounded pretty pessimistic from listening to the folks earlier. So our recommendation right now for all these type of events are either delay or end or cancel, depending on the timeframes that we're looking at here in the near future. We just had a lodgers tax meeting yesterday and our budget's going to be pretty tight this year. We don't expect a whole lot of additional monies until obviously the lodging increases. And that looks very remote right now. And we only have a balance, usable balance of about $130,000 to use for advertising. And so we'll be, the board will be working on this, that there is a recovery program through New Mexico Tourism with a two-to-one match. So we're thinking about using about half that monies to go towards that. It's not something that will have to be implemented right away. They're aware that things are going to change if we can't really advertise Las Vegas properly or anywhere in New Mexico for that matter. You know, this process will probably be pushed down the road, so to speak, until a proper time that those investment dollars would actually have a return by bringing tourists into town. So I stand for any questions on any of this if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, so does that mean then that, you talked about fireworks? You know, the people that set up the stands, it seems like they appear overnight. So are we going to restrict them, the sales of any fireworks? Is that what we're talking about?
No, we're not, we're talking about the fireworks display that the city puts on.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm talking about the fireworks and the vendors that come in? That won't be allowed?
No, they'll be allowed.
Oh, will they?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
People can buy the fireworks in their own yard, but we just won't, because of the mass gathering for the fireworks display. Maybe we could do it for New Year's Eve.
The fireworks, you mean?
It was a possibility.
Sure.
It would be nice.
Because you still have people gathering for the fireworks.
I hope so. Thank you, brother. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
All righty.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the item here we have before us is discussion recommendation. So are we making a decision on that? Are we giving direction or what's?
He's giving us our recommendation as to what we should do with these events, correct?
And?
I think decision probably has to happen for next meeting.
Okay.
Based on the meeting that you received today.
Okay.
I'd like to see that on the next agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Take action on that.
Okay. Next agenda item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The third item is discussion consideration of Resolution 2017, these other rules of order and decorum for all city of Las Vegas council meetings. Earlier, you had requested that I put together, Mr. Mayor, these rules of decorum. And so that would be a city attorney, he reviewed the resolution and made some minor changes. And we are presenting as a council for the consideration. And at this time, I'm sure all of you have read it, although you didn't take any suggestions of any additions or changes.
Can we take this document and come back with recommendations?
Absolutely.
All right. Or if somebody has a recommendation now, they can go ahead and voice. Anybody?
I have one. Mr. Mayor, go ahead. I'm number three. I'm number three. If we could also include during this pandemic, include that the clerk would be accepting emails to your address, your email address also?
So it's my understanding, Councilor, you want some language placed in there that's possibly stating during unforeseen circumstances, maybe public info may be forwarded to the city clerk's email address.
Yes, yes.
You can certainly add that.
Thank you.
That's the only change or recommendation?
I would also recommend that the public info be limited to items on the agenda.
That is in your consent.
Okay, I did see that. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Which are recommendations, Cassandra, should we?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that this would be adding the additional information the council employees stated that we would put this on our next agenda as a consent item?
For adoption?
Adoption.
Very well. Thank you so much for your work with this. Thank you, Scott.
Is that, is that the, well, the council for consent?
I agree. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The next item is Resolution 20-14. That is the transfer of three vehicles to Animal Welfare Coalition. And we have Police Chief Bev here to present that item.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Bev.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilman Dr. Taylor. May it please the governing body, on behalf of the police department, I am seeking the approval to transfer three vehicles to the Animal Welfare Coalition in their capacity as contracted to the city of Las Vegas for the purpose of whatever business they deem appropriate.
Okay. So that would have to be on our action item for next week's meeting as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And I would also recommend that on consent agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just had one question. Chief Bev, is they're aware that the vehicle comes as is and?
Yes, sir.
They have no liability?
Yes, sir. And they have drafted a letter to that effect, sir.
Next, Mr. Bev.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We are looking for approval to transfer two vehicles to the West Las Vegas School District, also in as-is condition, that would serve a better purpose for them and the vehicles have no use and no value to us.
What do they want it for? And just curious?
One of them will be used for their security officers and the other one as a staff guard.
Okay. Very well.
Mr. Mayor, would that also be on consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, the police department is seeking the approval to transfer two as-is police vehicles for the purpose of their security staff. These vehicles have no value to the city, the police department, and they will be transferred in as-is condition.
To who?
Las Vegas City Schools.
Oh, okay. Got you. All right.
Mr. Mayor? Chief, so is it their responsibility to take off any lettering from the cars or are you?
Yes, sir.
You're going to let them still keep the police on there?
No, sir.
Okay. Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have two more for Highlands? No.
We actually, shortly after I took the helm as police chief, we transferred three vehicles to Highlands University. I don't know if you've seen the white-crowned Victorias that say security on them?
Yeah.
That came from us.
That came from us.
Okay.
And we have two new ones this last month?
We have two that are waiting for us to be picked up, and with the assistance of Dr. Taylor, they're insured. And we'll be traveling to Chalmers Ford tomorrow to pick them up.
And who are those going to?
They will be going to two of our patrol lieutenants.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Anything I can just add to that, to thank you, Chief Bibb, because you also got Explorer donated to us. It's in good shape from San Francisco.
Two Explorers, sir.
Two Explorers, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bibb, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is that also an item for consent?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is Item 7, our final item, and that is Resolution Number 20-16, donating two rocks from the city museum to New Mexico Highlands University's Geology Department. And we have our city attorney, Scott Aaron, present.
Welcome, Mr. Aaron. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, directors, guests. May it please the governing body, this is a very straightforward resolution, where the city museum has actually two rocks that are of some geologic and educational value to Highlands, the geology department, but the museum says, basically, they're not in need of them. So this is just a very straightforward resolution, being able to transfer possession of those two rocks to the geology department of New Mexico Highlands, and in exchange, the city and the museum are released from any type of liability concerning or associated with those two rocks.
That would also be on the agenda, consent agenda?
Yes, and I would recommend consent.
Okay.
Consent agenda.
Gentlemen?
Consent, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Where did these rocks come from, or were they donated by somebody, or?
You know, my understanding is, and I have to get the museum director here to give you the detailed history of it, that they've been in possession of the museum for some time, just not something the museum has any desire to hold on to or to continue to maintain. I don't think there's any danger, it says that here that there's, the minerals that these rocks are made of have some type of a radioactive element to them, and that's what the interest is, I think, for the geology department. Not any danger or concern to the community, but just merely wanting to transfer possession in a way that's formal.
So we won't give liability?
No, the city nor the museum will maintain any liability.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Which is city manager, and that's just for the students for training, or for experiments, or do you know?
You know, I don't know, I just know that the geology department over at Highlands has expressed that those two rocks would be of educational value for their department.
Just letting you know, if they come out doing any breaking science methods out of that, or discoveries, to give the city the credit, right?
Yeah, we may wanna file a patent.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron, appreciate it. And consent agenda for next meeting? Gentlemen, yeah?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank our guests tonight. Leo Maestas, the emergency management coordinator, Dr. Jesus Papero, Mr. Walter Adams, Commissioner for the Public Transportation, Mr. James Pariya is the regional district engineer, Maria Delvarie from the Utilities Department, thank you. Darren Muthlet, thank you very much. Bill Hendrickson, thank you. Chief Bibb, and Danny Gudalos sitting back there, he's very quiet, but his team has been really, really busy with the streets department. They've been sweeping, and striping, and congratulations, and please give your team a big thank you for us. We really appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Seeing to that, did we get a new street sweeper, a brand-new white one?
Yes, we've been, we've been, it's off, every working, you know, and operated, kind of sort of operated, but we are having a...
Well, I saw it the other day, going down the road, and it gave me a good feeling, so thank you for getting that. Thank you very much.
And please thank your team for all the hard work. The streets department is really making a difference in our city. I'd like to thank the Nocena back there, she's our technical wizard, in charge of putting us on TV and the sound and everything, thank you so much. I'd like to thank the tech people from the city of Las Vegas also for helping. Cassandra, thank you very much, and this young lady, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Sonia Donis is in the conversation there.
Ah, okay, hi Sonia, welcome. Thank you. And I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Mayor, make a motion.
We have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Amaro, second. Second by Mr. Yuli Abi, real call.
Councilor Vaca?
Yes.
Councilor Latoya?
Yes.
Councilor Mabody Junior?
Yes.
Councilor Amaro?
Yes.
I have a motion, I, Councilor Amaro, second by Councilor Yuli Abi Junior. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, motion carried.
And thank you for helping make this meeting happen, Cassandra.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.